Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We'll now call the meeting to order. I need someone to move that the meeting be opened to statements of no more than five members of the public, of no more than two minutes in length each. Who will so move? Counselor Leach, second Counselor Howe, call the question those in favor. Carrie. No one's coming forward at this time. Therefore, we'll move to item three, approval of the agenda, including late additions and leashes. I understand we have a late addition of eleven point three, and it is the official online platforms for Lilwet visitor information. So I need someone to move that October fifth, twenty twenty, regular council meeting agenda be adopted as amended, with item eleven point three added. Who will so move? Counselor Howe, second. Counselor Leach, call the question those in favor. Carrie. Is there any delegations, Mr. CEO?
No delegations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the item, public statutory hearing. Item five point one, public hearing for bylaw twenty twenty zero zero nine cannabis regulation. I will now call the public hearing of October fifth, twenty twenty, to order. This notice of public hearing was advertised in the Riverwood Lilwet News on September twenty third and September thirtieth in accordance with the section four six six of the Local Government Act and posted to the district's Facebook page on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty. So, just a few items before we begin. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section four six four of the Local Government Act considered proposed, District of Lilwet bylaw twenty twenty dash zero zero nine. The proposed bylaw and related information, including written comments received today, if any, is available for review at the staff table. At this public hearing, all persons wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. However, I will ask that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to matters contained in the bylaw. Those wishing to speak to this public hearing commence their remarks by stating their name. And I'd like to remind everyone present that those in attendance who choose to speak should be free to do so without comments, support, or duration from the gallery. The purpose of the public hearing is for council to hear everyone's opinion on the subject at hand to help in their decision-making process. To that end, I ask that members of the gallery forego cheering, clapping, comments of support, booing, jerrying, and disparaging comments. Everyone should feel free and comfortable to make their representations to council. Okay, Mr. Planner. I will now ask to outline the specifics of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of bylaw twenty twenty dash zero zero nine is to consider regulations on the production of cannabis on lands within the District of Lilwet. These changes include a modification to the definition of agriculture to explicitly remove processing. This will not affect processing permitted by the Agricultural Land Commission as the local government cannot limit such processing. This will also not prohibit winery, cidery, or distillery uses as they are independently defined. The bylaw adds definitions for the uses of cannabis production indoor and cannabis production outdoor, both of which are proposed to be permitted on agricultural land reserve exclusively. This bylaw is at the most restrictive end of the authorities granted to the local governments, but is not unique. In effect, this would prohibit the production, including cultivation and processing, of cannabis on all non-agricultural land reserve parcels, prevent the expansion of existing legally established operations, and compel growers on agricultural land reserve land to produce in an open field, in soil-based structures, or in existing structures originally constructed for crop production existing prior to July thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in concert with ALC regulations. Finally, after receiving responses from the Ministry of Agriculture and the Agricultural Land Commission, the bylaw proposes a thirty-meter setback for structures associated with cannabis operations when an abutting property is zoned residential, rural residential, or multifamily. Also, allot coverage provision is proposed at thirty-five percent for agricultural buildings, seventy-five percent for greenhouses, and five percent, or zero point two five hectares, for farm-related commercial or industrial uses. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I would invite yourself or council to ask any clarifying questions before moving on to the next section.
Council, do you have any clarifying questions? There be none. Then, Mr. Taylor, have any written submissions been received since the agenda has been published?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. From the initial public hearing held on August tenth, twenty twenty, seven submissions opposed the bylaw indicating support for cannabis operations with the current level of regulation. Key points raised were job creation, the legality of the industry versus the continuation of the unregulated market, economic impacts on Lilwet, the myths and stigmas surrounding the use, and the suitability of much of Lilwet's soil for this type of crop. From that same public hearing, five submissions were in support of the bylaw, which demonstrates opposition to cannabis production. Key points were general desire to not have the crop in the district, property values, traffic, odor, and noise. At the August tenth public hearing, four attendees spoke in favor of the proposed bylaw and eleven spoke in opposition to the bylaw. Included in your agenda package is a petition with ninety-eight signatories in support of the proposed bylaw. An additional page with eight signatories was submitted after the publication of the public hearing agenda. The wording of the petition is as follows. To petition council to prohibit cannabis production on all non-ALR parcels, including within industrial zones within the District of Lilwet. An additional three letters of opposition to the proposed bylaw was received this afternoon and has been provided to council. One letter spoke to the author's opinion on the economic benefit of the industry to the district and indicated that despite living on a cannabis farm, the smell was not as noticeable as the nearby wild sage. The letter further indicated that adjacent property values increased this year. The second letter spoke to the proposed bylaw making it difficult for currently illicit growers to become legal growers, including individuals with personal grow licenses, selling into the market illegally. The third letter opposed for reasons of personal employment in the industry. The author states that he believes that much of the support for this bylaw comes from people who are primarily interested in residential development. The author questions where residential development will come from with the opposition to new industries. And just before the meeting, a letter was submitted neither opposed or in support of the bylaw, rather detailing the effects that irresponsible land use planning can have on apiculture or beekeeping. The stance of this letter was that the author is not opposed to cannabis growing so long as it doesn't incentivize the repurposing of land with nectar-producing plants such as alfalfa or clover. They ask that site-specific zoning or bylaw variances take this into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I now declare this public hearing over. At this time, I ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw. After you have spoken once, I would ask that you wait until all other members in the public have had the opportunity to be heard before speaking a second time. So, please come forward to the lectern to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Andy Capprell, and I live at triple nine Whitney Road. I am here tonight to show my support for the proposed bylaw for the restriction of pot growing in the district.
Sorry, excuse me. Andy couldn't bring that closer to your desk, please.
I have sent all of you emails in the previous months with articles about the negative impacts of pot farms on neighborhoods. I hope you had had a chance to glance at them. Although these articles are from the states, they apply here as pot has been legal... Sorry. These articles are from the states. They can apply here as pot has been legal in some states for a while. Those places are now seeing the negative impacts it is having. I would briefly touch on some of the negativity associated with pot farms. Crime and cannabis have a long history. The growers have been doing it before it was legal, and as such, in all probability, we still have these connections to the black market. We all know organized crime networks have been tied to cannabis. Property values in the area of pot farms plummet. As such, Lilwet will lose tax revenue from these properties. Demand for housing in Lilwet could drop as families will not move here and pick other towns to call home. The pot farms investors are here for the money they will put in their pockets, not for what is best for Lilwet. The stench, as people are finding out, will be throughout the whole of town. It is not restricted to the grow-ups only. The noise from the generators and fans is constant, as I think some people are starting to find out. Local residents face increased traffic, noise, stench, and even harassment in some cases. If we don't restrict the pot industry now, there will be no taking it back in the future. It will have adverse, it will have a very negative effect on Lilwet and its future growth. This is a beautiful town. Let's keep it that way for the families. The tourism industry will also dry up before it's even reached its potential because nobody's going to come to visit Lilwet for the pot farms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, my name is George Vander Wolf. I've lived in Lilwet for sixty-seven years, and I love this place. I don't feel that growing marijuana is doing us any favors. Now, I've talked to people who are growing marijuana. Their attitude is, and they told me straight, "We can do whatever we want on our private property." My reply was, "I'm not going to stop you from doing what you want on your private property, but do you honestly believe that you have a right to infringe on the rights of others? Do you think it's right that you are putting this stench of the marijuana into your neighbor's yard? You are depriving them of the enjoyment of their home and their backyards." And I'll give you an example. We had relatives come down from Rudy's Lake. We lived eight miles down Texas Creek Road. We never dreamt that we would ever be problematic with this stench from marijuana. They have an eighty-acre plot on the Joneses Ranch. We were going to have breakfast on the patio with our relatives. When we went out to have breakfast, it didn't smell good at all. We had to have breakfast in the house. Now, do they honestly believe they have a right to put the stench of their product into my yard with no compensation, or not even no apologies, or even feeling a little bit sympathetic towards people who have to live with this stuff? So in my opinion, marijuana is not going to do this town any good whatsoever. Now, these people told me we are creating jobs. Well, let's take a look at the jobs they created on the Joneses eighty-eight acre grow-up. The fencing contractor was from Hundred Fifty Mile. The irrigation contractor was from Chillicothe. The farm laborer was bussed in from Abbott's Field. And when they go to harvest, I'm sure they will bring back that same farm laborer. So here we are. They tell us they're creating jobs. Well, they may be creating jobs for somebody somewhere, but I don't see the value to Lilwet. And, the money leaves now, but the stench stays here. So we're separate. So I've got to ask you one more time to the people growing marijuana. Do you really believe you have the rights to infringe on others and deprive them of the enjoyment of their houses and yard? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Angela Capprell, and I'm a resident at triple nine Whitney Road. My husband and I have worked hard all of our whole lives to be here. As outdoor enthusiasts, we chose Lilwet to be our home due to its sheer beauty. We have lived here for nine years and have become entrenched in the community. We work here and play here simply because it's a beautiful place to be. Last year, our neighbors sold their property to business people. The owner, Ed Holmes, promptly told us that he was not at all interested in living here. After he introduced himself, his son-in-law Daniel and partner Bresha proceeded to prepare their land to conduct a cannabis business, following its protocol. To our horror, they cut down all of their twenty acres of trees and had a ten-foot-high chain-like barbed wire fence erected, complete with surveillance cameras, that not only points along the fence line, but directly towards our shared driveway as well. Before these folks bought the property, we had enjoyed many walks down a quiet forested driveway which was lined with saskatoon and pine trees. Traffic were only ourselves, our neighbor, and perhaps visiting family in the summer. Last meeting, Daniel told us having ten employees, so including the three or four who resided at the house...
Excuse me, Angela. Try and keep your comments straight on the amendment to the bylaw, please.
The traffic has increased dramatically. The fence is a depressing sight, and along with the traffic, we no longer enjoy walking down our driveway where we were once enveloped by forests. There are also two large greenhouses where fans roam twenty-four seven. They sound like an airplane motor that never shuts off. There's a diesel generator running twenty-four seven that recently, due to a noise complaint, was moved, but now it's back and can be heard a kilometer into near by trains. I'm standing here today to tell you personally the impacts of this type of business within a residential neighborhood as I'd hate for someone else's haven to be ruined as ours has. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, everyone. My name is Danielle Wintla. There's a lot of comments directed towards me here, but speaking on the bylaw, I don't think this is the best policy move for the council because, as I said in my letter, it's going to keep black market growers in the black market. These black market growers have personal production licenses for medical cannabis, something that cannot be revoked by the municipality because they've been enshrined by the Supreme Court of Canada. These people have licenses to grow plants, and when the police come to their property, everything's legal, but then they sell it into the black market. That's how most of the dispensaries get their product. All the production is legal, but the sale is illegal. It's very hard for the police to stop that. Many of these people want to become commercially licensed businesses because that's what they are, is a business. They want to pay taxes, but they can't because there isn't a way for them to become legal. And then if you want to have a public hearing and everybody come forward that they want to start this business, they out themselves in the community that they're already doing this perhaps. And then new businesses who want to come from out of town here are going to be prevented from doing so, or, you know, they're just going to look to other municipalities where they don't have to go through this process. Processing especially, you know, you think of this like massive processing operations like there might be on Rochard Road. A lot of anger here directed towards things on Texas Creek Road, which I'll remind everybody is part of the Squamish Regional Lilwet, or the Squamish-Lilwet Regional District, not the District of Lilwet. So there's no jurisdiction over that area. People along that road can grow, and nothing that's said here stops them. So maybe taking direct action or talking to the B.C. Hop Company directly and saying, "There's all these families here. Can you guys install some more carbon filters at your plant?" So I'm just saying, and it maybe wasn't exactly to the bylaw, but the bylaw is coming after complaints that are happening, and it is not addressing anything to do with the most of those complaints. I don't think most of the complaints of smell are coming from our property. Maybe it is the neighbors. I'll remind them that the easement isn't their driveway. It's on our property, actually. We own that property. You have to use the easement to get there. Our neighbor has a gravel pit and equipment, so it's not a residential zone.
If I can do the same.
Yeah, I'll start now.
I don't want personal, you know, attacks on you at the same time.
Well, I just, in terms of this, it's not a residential neighborhood. So, areas that are zoned agricultural right now should maybe be kept agricultural and not directed and acted like they are residential neighborhoods because it is zoned agricultural and light industrial, and I believe that cannabis should fit in those guidelines. And so, yeah, I oppose this bylaw and think it needs to go back. It's beneficial to my business interests to have this bylaw stay in it is and me to get a variance for my business. But I think it's bad for the residents of Lilwet, and that's why I'm here to speak against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just remind councillors, if you need any information for purposes of clarification, you can do so. If, from my perspective, I hope I didn't miss from your initial take, you say it's bad for Lilwet or bad for the residents of Lilwet, could you expand on that slightly, please?
There's a lot of complaints about crime in the neighborhood. So, the criminal element of cannabis. These people don't want to be criminals. They want to be florists. We want to grow flowers and not have other people bother us for it. So, these people, yeah, they've become criminals because it's been illegal. And now, as a country, we've gone over prohibition and said that, yeah, this stuff's legal. People should be able to use it. We allow wineries and cideries, but all of the science available shows that those are much more harmful effects to our body. We grow cannabis for medicinal purposes. Other people grow it for other purposes. So, you know, a lot of the hemp farming is for medicinal purposes as well. So what's going to happen is it's going to stay in the criminal element. You're going to have money that goes into criminal organizations. They can buy weapons. They're going to have dealers in the town selling drugs. Or you can go with the legal system. We get inspected by Environment Canada, the Canada Revenue Agency, and Health Canada to make sure that we have proper, and if it's an indoor facility, they make sure you have proper air filtration. But those regulations don't apply to personal medicinal growers. So you're going to have smell problems where somebody's growing, you know, on their property, and they've got neighbors, but it's a personal medical application. You can't take it away. And then because they don't have any way to sell it legally, they sell it illegally. So if you don't produce a way for these people to operate legally in town, they will continue to operate illegally. They've done it for a long time, and they'll continue to make money. So, if it's an issue of crime, I believe there's going to be less crime if it's legal. And if you look at studies, and I'll try and link some to the council because I know there's been news articles and those sort of things, but research done into these things shows that crime goes down when you legalize things like alcohol or cannabis because prohibition has been a big problem. So, you know, letting people produce in town, and I will point to the Cootni Central, the Central Cootni Regional District, that put in a program to help transition those growers out of the illegal system because they saw the benefit for people there. Do you have any more questions about that?
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just have a question. I would like to ask you, how does this bylaw impact your business? I understand what you're saying for the community in the town and how for private growers, but how does this...
Mr. Mayor, if I may at this point, the purpose of a public hearing isn't meant to be a back-and-forth with the individuals. I would ask if there are any clarifying questions on the bylaw and legal nonconformity and other elements of the Local Government Act, that that be addressed to staff rather than to members of the gallery.
Okay. Counselor Hoff, if that can be brought up on the regular meeting and questions to the staff. Thank you.
Okay. I can answer in general terms how it would may affect other businesses, or no? Okay.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, thank you for this opportunity to come and present once again. This has been an interesting process in the operation of local government, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I sent Kevin a fairly detailed presentation earlier today with some information that I think is very useful in terms of, you know, evaluating where Lilwet is going in comparison to where other communities across the province have gone, including, you know, efforts by the provincial government, efforts by other regional districts and other communities. I basically feel that, and I'm opposed, I should say that upfront, I'm opposed to this bylaw. I believe that there's an excellent opportunity here for council to engage in what is an industry that can bring a lot of jobs, bring a lot of wealth, taxation dollars, as Daniel said, getting rid of the black and the gray markets, and to bring that all up into legality. We have a couple of individuals and beyond that, other individuals within the region, within the district, that have a lot of experience, and that experience would allow Lilwet to build a center of competence here for not only the production and the growing of cannabis, but also for the manufacture of other products, for the marketing, and bringing that all here. There will be billions of dollars spent across Canada in the next years in cannabis and for the cannabis industry. We have an opportunity now to bring some of that money to the city. If the council chooses to reject that opportunity, entrepreneurs such as myself and Daniel will find other opportunities in other communities that are going to embrace what we're bringing and the opportunities that we bring to those communities. And I think it's incumbent on the council here to really look seriously and perhaps do more studies in terms of what have others done, what benefits have it brought, and including some of the comments that people are making here about some of the concerns that they have, and they're valid concerns, and I don't want to degrade those, but they can be dealt with. And I think that, you know, just to have one public hearing and just to say at this one public hearing, you know, we're going to negate all of these opportunities, I think is a mistake. Truly, all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'd just like to make something really clear, and that is that this bylaw will change...
Could we have your name, please?
Martha.
Your name, please.
Vera Lassie. But this bylaw and what we're discussing tonight will have no effect on the two projects that are up here talking. This won't affect the lab in any way, shape, or form?
If you could, please keep it to the amendment to the bylaw.
And this bylaw will affect a lot of us because what it gives us is the guarantee that we won't have marijuana or cannabis growing next door to residential areas. So, there's lots of agricultural land that people can grow it on, and I don't see why it has to come in close to where there's families and children. And it's a simple, it's a very simple thing, this bylaw. All it's saying is that you can't grow cannabis in rural residential properties. So with that, I'm standing up here saying this, but in behind me comes up people saying that this is going to destroy their business, this is going to do this and that. No. That property is in the bylaw. It's not... His grandfather, so it's not going to change anything for him. And for the lab, it's not going to change anything because it's on agricultural land. But for me, living my fence up against the Commingham property, which they are leasing parts of, it will make a big difference. It already will make a difference to my property because the realtor has told me, "If you want to sell, it's going to affect your property because you have to tell the people that there's going to be a grow, that you could be right at your fence marijuana." Because our R2 is on the other side that goes all the way up the hill. I don't think anybody I know, nobody on our block wants that, and I don't see now that stopping anybody from doing business. There's agriculture land, lots of it around, and they grow on there just like Bresha is doing right now at somewhere up in Pavilion. They bring it to the lab and process it. Nobody's complaining about that. But what we are saying is we don't want it in our backyards. So with that, I just want to straighten that around and say that the two people that are getting up here talking are... So, with that, I just wanna straighten that around and say that the two people that are getting up here talking are not affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Kerry, yes. Uh, my only concern is the noise levels that go on with this industry that bothers people 24/7, which is not right. And, uh, the smell is, uh, it's the name of the plant, so we can't, can't deal with that, but you can certainly deal with the noise problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Can I ask a question?
We're here to listen to you, so essentially, you have to present something in terms of how you feel about the amendment to the zoning bylaw.
It, but it's, it's just really difficult to know what the bylaw is when you read it because of the manner in which it's in jargon language. So, like, i- i- essentially, i- if, if there were a clarification, I might be able to tell you a little more about what I feel about it.
Now, wait for me. It was presented and it was fairly clear by our planner. Maybe you weren't in the room at the time.
Sure, I was a little late.
Yes, Mr. Carter, uh, Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, in, in my best attempts to not sound snarky, um, this bylaw has been advertised now four times in the newspaper, and there has been adequate opportunity to, uh, contact the district office for clarification. The point of a public hearing is not to ask questions of council.
That's right.
Gotcha.
But by all means, with what you know, if you wish to present, we're here to listen.
Uh, nope, that's fine.
Thank you. Next, please. It appears that, uh, everyone has had a chance to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw that's already presented? Thank you.
Just very briefly, um, you know, things that, that I've heard some of the issues tonight, uh, if they're made clear to us as, as producers, uh, there are things that can be dealt with. Noise, for example, can be dealt with, there's ways of doing that, you know? If we know that that's an issue, that can be dealt with. Generally, the smell that I hear often, uh, from the cannabis, some of you, I think, had an opportunity to come to the property, and, and I'm not sure if you were, 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 uh, um, inundated with the smell, if it was terrible. I walk up and down that driveway every day, and I actually have found, and I wrote this in my, in my presentation, I often find that the smell of the wild sage overpowers any smell that I smell from the, from the plants that are growing in the farm. Once again, with the process that's being used, in our case, frozen, in other cases where it's being dried, and, and I think there needs to be a distinction made between what is grown as cannabis and what is being grown as hemp. And I'm not an expert on this, but I believe that the, the odor that generated from the hemp farm is a lot stronger than anything that, that comes out of the cannabis farm, uh, on our property. Secondly, where it's being dried on O'Shard Road, where there's a lot of smell again being generated, that can be filtered. There are very efficient filters that can be put in, they cost a little bit of money perhaps, but they can be filtered, and that smell will be essentially eliminated. So, I think that, that, you know, uh, just, uh, once again, just some clarification. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for a second time? Oh, sorry, you're initial, you, okay, come forward, please.
Hi there, Mayor, Mayor Council, my name is Connor Barnsley. Uh, I'm involved with the operations up there, I just wanna clarify a few things. It was said that our labor is from out of town, that's not true. All of our label, labor, including me, are local. We all live here, within the city limits or just outside. Uh, as for the generator, that was not moved due to a noise complaint. I moved it for necessity, it's only gonna be running a short time longer, and I'm having the power operated, and there will be no more generator noise.
Okay, thanks, just stick to the zoning amendment, please, if you can, what?
Sure, okay, I just wanted to clarify those facts. Thank you.
Here we have it, thank you. Come forward.
The proposed bylaw is not gonna have an effect on Danielle and Ed's operation, but what, uh, it will do is limit the growth in this town for the industry that the, the town can actually control what's going on. There's lots of ALR land, as somebody has said, which they can use for pot growing. But if you let it go rampant and let it go on every, on all the land, you can't take it back. So, I think it's better if the district can control it and see where it goes. There's nobody saying nobody can grow pot, they can do it on ALR land, feel free, it's going on everywhere. We just wanna limit it to where it's gonna be affecting people in town.
Thank you. Come forward.
If I may again, Mr. Mayor, uh, one of the things that, that I brought up at the last meeting and that I'll bring up again is that, you know, as, as Andy just said, and I agree with him, that, that I don't think it's something that you wanna just do everywhere. It's not like a salt shaker that you just kinda sprinkle around and, and let everybody do whatever they want. I think that there's an opportunity now, uh, with the, uh, official community plan that is being worked on, that, that, that's really the opportunity and really the time where I believe that, you know, council and the public has an awful lot of, of opportunity to have an input into, you know, what is appropriate, you know, up at the end of Whitney Road compared to what is appropriate down on the lower part of, of Airport Road, or what is appropriate, uh, you know, in other parts of the, of the city in terms of land use, in terms of, of, of residential use, in terms of industrial use. Uh, I think there is, you know, good reason to have areas where certain things are allowed and certain things aren't allowed. And I think that that's really the, the, the position or the job, uh, of what a, what an official community plan does. And I would seriously s- suggest that, you know, uh, and I understand that this is kind of a, 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 a means to stop things right now, uh, but in general, as, as the community plan, plan builds out, to look at, you know, how can we do this, you know, in various parts of the city or in various parts of the district, still allowing it, not putting a door closed, saying it's never going to happen, uh, but to do it in a regulated sort of way, and perhaps even putting in additional restrictions of what you can or can't do. You know, making, you know, addressing the concerns that people have, which I think need to be addressed, uh, but, but not saying, no, not gonna do it, because there are those opportunities that I pointed out earlier. Thanks again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll just say one thing, is that the, the more regulations help bigger corporations come in, cause they have lawyers and know better how to get around these things. So, when you have, put it to ALR land, you're gonna have bigger companies that can come into these places, like it's happening with the B.C. Hops Company, and they're not living here, they don't care about it. What cannabis provides, something called meaningful work, which is something where people have a bit of autonomy, and if they work hard, they can make a lot of money as a small independent business owner. And that's something, there's not a lot of meaningful work available in Lilwet. So, this bylaw is, is not gonna stop, you know, big businesses or people that have a lot of regulatory knowledge from getting into this. It's gonna stop this, this, you know, mom and pop operations from becoming legitimate and being able to have, you know, a stable, good income for, you know, dozens of different families from independent businesses in here. So, I really believe that you're gonna see consolidation to fewer businesses, which, you know, could be better for certain corporations, but not for residents who wanna see more economic benefit spread out amongst the community.
Thank you.
I'd just like to talk about the bylaw, I'm here, my name is Vera Lassie. What we came here for today is to say that right now, as the bylaw stands, RR1, RR2 areas are affected by this thing of you can grow a crop and that can be cannabis. For us that live in those areas, we didn't buy it for that reason, most of us, we bought it because we wanted to have a family, a horse, plants and feed, do whatever we want with that kind of thing. We pay taxes for every inch of that property, and, and we value it. I can't see how this, this bylaw should even be on the table, because we shouldn't, the fact that we can grow cannabis on it is the reason that we don't wanna see this, this by, bylaw amended. I mean, we want to see it amended and have cannabis taken out of it. That's only for small areas, that's family areas where people have bought the property, we've all paid a lot of money, invested in it, and we enjoy it, and it's for their neighborhoods, and it's for Lilwet. There are tons of agriculture land around, and so, we want to see council stick, exchange the bylaw, put the word cannabis in there, so that us that live in rural residential areas can still have young families and people playing around, and we're not faced with the smell of the cannabis, or are we faced with the other things that go with it? The noise, which they want to deny, but it is noisy, the generators and stuff, and the water supplies, that's all a different thing. But the actual bylaw tonight is just to protect the rural residential areas that are small properties, and they don't have to be growing cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I think this is your first time, right?
Hello, my name is Neil, and I'm Daniel's brother. I just moved to Lilwet, I'm gonna be living here permanently. Um, I love this town, I think it's beautiful. When I drive up Highway 12, my heart lifts, it's gorgeous here, and I wanna put down roots. And like the last speaker said, you want rural residential to be for things like family farms. I would like to work on my family's farm, and I would like other people to have the same opportunity here. I think it's a real opportunity for the town, and I think it's a great way to keep young families. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I actually had one other thing I wanted to mention. I'll try to keep this quick. Um, I just wanna say that, uh, we are interested in improving the soil on the farm, and I'm sure that lots of other small farms would like to do the same. Cannabis offers an opportunity to do this on a small scale that'd be profitable. But if that land is redeveloped, then that farmland can be lost, and I think that would be a real shame for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a second or first time?
Well, I hope this bylaw can pass, and the further we can move this weed out of the town, the better off it will be. Now, to address this gentleman here, who's giving you eye in the sky.
Sorry, Mr. Randall, we don't wanna be addressing individuals, please, you gotta stick to the amendment of the zoning bylaw. Let's keep persons and people out of it as much as we can.
There are people here that are saying there's going to be millions of dollars made in marijuana, that could be. But I'm gonna give you two examples. A Fria Corporation, which is in CBD, they were on NBNN last week. They have a whole warehouse globe of oil that they cannot sell. Aurora Cannabis, which is one of the larger companies, they laid off 700 people last week. They lost $3 billion in the last quarter. So, that's not to project millions of dollars here that it could be valued below it, because there's many, many, many companies that are in financial trouble. So, as far as I'm concerned, marijuana is nobody's cannabis.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I'll say that, uh, last month was the highest sales of legal cannabis in, in the Canadian market history. Uh, this is about the bylaw?
We're gonna get into a back and forth personally. Stick, please, to the amendment to the zoning bylaw.
Okay. You, you're gonna stop more small businesses, like, with stopping processing. Processing includes packaging, it includes making edibles, it includes all sorts of accessory things that make jogs that don't produce smell. The smell is coming from big operations. Keeping it on ALR land is gonna make bigger and bigger farms. You're gonna have a thousand acres of hemp nearby, and the entire valley will smell. And you're in this bylaw stopping small businesses from opening up in town, not what is actually creating the smell.
Thank you. Anyone else? First timer?
Yeah, okay. Uh, yes, so like, my name is, like, Clay, like, Rodenizer. I live on, like, Rashard Road. Uh, I wasn't on a dock, I'm not even prepared for this, but, um, because, because we are on the hop side of things, right? And, um, or not on, well, like, to the hop, there, like, to the hop, like, company, right? So, anyway, um, I do support this, even though it doesn't help us. I mean, if you don't have some kind of control there, it runs, like, rampant. You know, like, for us with the ALR, I mean, we were promised all kinds of stuff. They didn't put any filters in, they told us not to tell them how to run their business. We don't have any control, we're in a full-on, uh, uh, like, industrial, uh, thing now, right? It's just crazy. If you don't put this kind of stuff in place for in town, or at least don't put some kind of controls in, I'm not against the whole, the whole, like, cannabis thing. It is a business, it is, you know, like, what it is, but we have to have some kind of control. We pay $6,000 a year in taxes, and I can't control one foot on the other side of my fence what happens. And that's what's happening up on Airport Road, right? You know, so it's not that we're against anybody here, we just need to have some kind of say, so that we all see a little bit of value in our home, we can all have, like, employment on both sides of it, and we can have a little bit of peace that are, have, right, like, at our houses. So, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Speak again, please?
Yes?
I'd just like to speak to, um, taking stuff out of the ALR. And basically, we're proposing taking or making amendments to the ALR based on smell and sight. If we go, if we set that precedent, there's a lot of other activities that can be taken out of the ALR, and that's a slippery slope for us to start. It probably should be done at the B.C. Agricultural Council at that point, uh, if we go that far down that slope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask again, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? Is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw? For a third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw? Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, I require that a resolution that all written and verbal submissions regarding bylaw 2020-009 up to and including October 5th, 2020, be received and the public hearing be closed at this time. Who will so move? Councillor Hoppe, second, councillor Howe. I'll call the question, those in favor. Kerry? Thank you, everyone, and thank you for your participation. We'll now revert back to the original, uh, agenda. Item 6.1, adoption of council meeting minutes. I need someone to move, September 14th, 2020, regular council meeting minutes be adopted as present, who will so move? Councillor Howe, second. Counselor Howe, second. Counselor Hopple, call the question. Those in favor, Carrie. I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that council, we sent regrets not hearing out of the program. There be no business arising from minutes and no rising report. We'll go to correspondence and petitions. Does anyone see item 9.1, piece of correspondence that they'd like to have removed for discussion? Counselor Howe?
Uh, number one.
Oh, your mic.
Get used to this. Number one. And number six. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then 9.1, number one, will go into 18.1 under new business. And number six, City of New West Letter will be 18.2. Therefore, I need someone to move that correspondence included in the information report dated September 29th, other than item one and six, be received for information. Who will so move? Counselor Leach, second. Counselor Howe. Call the question. Those in favor, Carrie. Okay. Item 10, reports from committees of council commissions, none. 11, reports and presentation staff. 14th Avenue Groundwater Source feasibility study.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff and community members. So when I first came to Lilwet, as many of you know, I came from Alberta and I had the opportunity in Alberta to see many different systems, water distribution systems. Coming to Lilwet, we have a very complex water system. It offers challenges, but it can also make for a very robust system. So one of the strategies of staff is to look at some of our water sources basically for two reasons. One, to take a lessen of demand on the water plant, but it's also brought about by periods of turbidity at the Seaton Plant, which when we're at high turbidity makes it hard on equipment and hard to actually get water through our plant. So it necessitates a look at other sources of water. And in this case, we're looking at the 14th Avenue Groundwater Source, which is a spring, which we were tasked to look at again for lessening the demand on the plant. So this is one of our overarching needs by the district as outlined in section 2.6 of the 2020 Water Conservation Plan as one of our efforts to conserve water and lessen the demand on the plant. In this case, ISL Engineering and Land Services was retained by the district to explore the feasibility of supplementing the current Seaton River Water Treatment Plant with an additional source of potable water to be used during periods of high turbidity in the Seaton River. Again, this is due to that ingress of fine grained silt or sand at the Seaton intake. And really, this study represents a piece of the overall analysis of water source viability in the district. Again, this becomes especially important when choosing the best path forward with regard to potentially expanding the district water system, which has been an issue over the years that has been discussed by council. In this case, the alternate water source of 14th Avenue, which was evaluated as a spring that occurs in the hillside in the vicinity of the high school. The groundwater is collected and flows in a closed pipe system to the top of Station Hill Road, where it then flows to an open channel to the Fraser River. Some of you might have seen this as you travel down the road, just to the west side of the road. So measurements were taken on a weekly basis, which commenced in January of 2020 with work by, again, both district staff and ISL engineering. In addition to field measurements, the groundwater was sampled and tested under various parameters and in general, the results were consistent. And I've included a copy of the test results over hundreds of parameters. There were some variations with regard to fecal coliform, but nothing of great concern. And this would be mainly due to the fact that if we did capture this water source or were to potentially capture this water source, it would be, the flow would be to the plant, so it would still receive treatment. It would just be another means of supplementing the plant with water to be treated. So the results of the study show that this is a viable source, but as noted in the report, more work is to be done, especially when considering IHA requirements. Mainly what was outlined was increasing the length of time of analysis so that staff can have a more holistic view of the source and any potential variations, especially over the course of the year. Again, this is just one small piece of an overall assessment of various sources in the district, but it is a small win for the district as we were fairly consistent with our sampling and the results were good. Any questions?
Thank you, Counselor Howe.
Why does my mic turn off?
Turn it off.
Before I jump in first, why am I not surprised? Is there a specific regulation that IHA points to in terms of a requirement for a lengthy period of time for sampling?
Yes, mainly if we want to get a water license for this or an actual work permit to construct or capture the source, which would only be phase one. Phase two would potentially be holding the water in a reservoir outside of the plant to be used directly at the plant. But IHA, yes, they have stipulated that they want to see a longer period of time for more study and they would need to see that before we could ever move forward with any work permit or approvals.
No, I don't mean to get into jousting words with you, but why am I not surprised? The 4321, the requirements from municipalities for 4321 was to put together a plan and previous council and previous staff were let down that we had to do this. And my concern is, I'm really pleased that staff is not giving up on this as a source, number one. Number two, I believe that it's worthy to study it and to push back. In other words, IHA showed me the regulation that requires a specific period of time in terms of, and amounts of sampling, which is obviously expensive. So please, humor being a little bit on that one, I, we happen to see because somebody sitting at a desk at IHA says this is what we're going to do and we jump around and do it and I say, let's subtly and methodically and technically question some of those things because we have some very good water supplies here that we have to capitalize. And I thank you for not giving up now, Counselor. Your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still learning about source water, groundwater and water sheds. And as I go through that process, there's some muddy water for me. So when we, in the breakdown in the description, it says that there would be proposed capturing of this water source through a closed pipe system, just throwing the groundwater in a reservoir, which sounds fantastic, but I do have a question about that. So we'll essentially be redirecting the groundwater or stopping it and diverting it somewhere else, uphold it, is that correct?
Correct. Whereas normally it would fall to the Fraser River.
Okay, that was my second question. Where is it actually going and will there be other effects environmentally from having stopped that water source?
Perhaps an environmental impact study would be part of the engineering required if we did look at the source further.
Okay. I'd be interested in knowing where the water is currently going and what is currently feeding. Because a decision like this, it would be, it would be detrimental to get almost complete and find out what its whole diverse effects at other places that we weren't really prepared for, so that would be great. Thank you, Dan.
Absolutely. And again, this is a small piece of kind of the overall analysis of the water system. So that would help us in deciding or looking more into the source or if it necessitates that we look further to the source. So again, this is a preliminary study, but again, the results were quite good. So promise us to maybe continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Counselor Leach?
Hey, Larry. So we in our page have got table 2.1, the register for points of diversion. Going forward with this, are you prepared to look at what impact us diverting the water would have on these water licenses? And are we prepared, because you started messing with everything, the chain is connected, so I just wanted to know where we're standing at that point.
No, you're absolutely right. And thankfully, we've been looking at upstream users. So if anything, our flow rates would be affected, which is exactly, I believe, why IHA has noted that the study be longer so we can see that usage and flow rates over an extended period of time, maybe due to other users. I know the reservation use of that water as well.
And then the health from council? Thank you, Mr. Carter. I need someone to move that the 14th Avenue Groundwater Feasibility Report be received for information. Who will so move? Counselor Howe, second. Counselor Hopple, call the question. Those in favor, Carrie. Item 11.2, Block Watch Program. Mr. Deniger?
Hello, council. So as council and the community are well aware, anecdotally and statistically, the community has had an increase in crime over the last year or so, particularly burglary and theft. Property theft has been rampant in certain areas. And so led by mayor and council, there has been a very concerted effort to work with all levels of the RCMP all the way up to the national level, as well as our MP and MLA and the premier, to try to find a solution to this problem. There's a number of issues, including the current allotment of officers to the local RCMP detachment. That is being actively worked on. There's a potential solution. But it takes more than RCMP to fix this problem. It takes the community itself to get involved and be active. And in consultation with the RCMP and with actually Sean O'Reilly at Teaklet, who's running a Block Watch program up there, it's been recommended that the Block Watch program would be one of the best ways to tackle this in our community to deal with the actual effects of the crime. So the underlying issues of mental health, drugs, organized crime, that is something the community should not try to take on itself. There's trained professionals for that, but what we can all do is look out for each other. And one of the easiest ways to do that is to launch a Block Watch program in all the community, in each of the neighborhoods affected. So staff are recommending that for a very small fee, a hundred dollars a year, plus some startup costs of about $500 to $1,000, we can get this program running. And I announced it on Facebook on Friday and the inbox has already been inundated with potential volunteers. So if council approves this, I will start that program tomorrow.
Any questions from council? Counselor Hopple?
Through the mayor. So Sean O'Reilly, she's involved with this. She's already got this up and running. Are the rest of the town going to be involved too, or are we sending a letter to the rest of the town to invite them?
If council approves this program tonight, then yes, they'll be invited to participate, to start their own programs. They run at the block level, that's its Block Watch. So there's little areas, you divvy up a map into certain areas and then the captain, volunteers, they do a criminal record check on that captain and that captain runs the program in that designated area. For example, the hot farm area would likely be divided up into four segments. So it would be four Block Watch commanders for that area. And so each of our indigenous neighbor communities could likewise set up a program. They could either run it through the district or on their own. It really is once running a volunteer-driven program in collaboration with the RCMP and the district.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Mr. Deniger. I need someone to move that the district of Lilwet joined the Block Watch program to facilitate its activities in the community and that up to $1,200 we allocated from the 2020 budget to fund the startup cost for the program. And further that, the annual program membership dues be included in future budget proposals. Who will so move? Counselor Howe, second. Counselor Hopple. I'll call the question. Those in favor, Carrie. Thank you. Item 11.3, late edition, is the official online platforms for a little bit visitor information. Mr. Deniger?
Thank you. I'd like to point out, this is only a late item because I forgot to click the submit button after the report. It's not the fault of Kevin McHenry. I'd also like to say, before I jump into this one, for Block Watch program, anyone interested, you can email safertogether@lilwet.ca. Tell all your friends safertogether@lilwet.ca if you're interested in joining Block Watch. Okay, so right in 11.3, this is a request from Tourism Lilwet and our Economic Development Liaison to officially recognize Visit Lilwet as the official platform for all things related to tourism and destination marketing. So right now, the Facebook page used by the district is actually facebook.com/visitlilwet. That would have to change. It's an easy change. All the functionality will continue, but the name would then be picked up by Tourism Lilwet, who would run that program. Likewise, twitter.com is currently Visit Lilwet, is run by the district. We'll simply rename that and keep our followers. And Tourism Lilwet will take that over. It's one name that can work for multiple online presences, so it has great value in it being official and consistent. And there's no cost to it.
Any questions, comments from council? Counselor Hopple?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor, please, through the mayor. The Lilwet Facebook page, as it stands, that's the Facebook page you're referring to? And how do correspondence look regarding what you, what administration would like to have put on that page in terms of, like, it's Tourism Lilwet. Are you contacting the person in charge of that? Is it like it's another step in communication?
Yeah, this request is, as you see, the report was written by Suzanne Denbeck, our Economic Development Liaison. She's been working hand in hand with Tourism Lilwet from prior to the last request that came to council for that $10,000 funding for the destination marketing. So this is just the next natural step. That visitlilwet.ca website is now up and running. It will continue being developed. So it is Tourism Lilwet working with Suzanne, who's made this request, to now take on these new names. So for example, with the district's Facebook page, facebook.com/visitlilwet, if council approves this change, we will simply rename the page and then Tourism Lilwet captures that name a minute later, hopefully before someone else does. And that becomes a brand new Facebook page designed specifically for destination marketing. And the district's website or Facebook page will simply be District Lilwet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? And it has no financial implication.
None whatsoever, except more tourists here.
Okay. I need someone to move that the following online platforms be designated as the official sources for visitor information regarding Lilwet website? Semi-cock. Do I have to go through all this?
No, you can say it's okay.
Website as it is written, facebook.com as it is written, twitter.com as it is written, and instagram.com as well. Who will so move? Counselor Hopple, second. Counselor Howe. I'll call the question. Those in favor, Carrie. Thank you, Mr. Deniger. Okay, now, item 12, 12.1 zoning bylaw amendment to clarify regulations for cannabis operations. We have had two public meetings, a lot of work by staff. Thank you, staff. Thank you, folks that participated in the public hearings. And we are not here to solicit new information or to accept it. However, any of the questions such as you had, Counselor Hopple, we can ask the staff for clarification. However, any of the questions such as you had, Counsel Hopple, we can ask the staff for clarification. Counsel, anything require clarification from staff? Counsel Hopple.
Through the mayor, I have to do this. I just want to clarify some points. I understand them, but I feel like some people in the community may not. So for that reason, am I to understand that with the passing of this bylaw, that existing operations will continue to operate? And if so, new owners will also continue to operate the current business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. First of all, in the spirit of keeping staff relaxed, may I suggest not starting a sentence with "I have a list." To answer your question, this section five thirty-four of the Local Government Act states for the purpose that of legal non-conforming status, a change of owner, tenants, or occupants of land, or of a building or structure does not affect the use of the land and will continue to maintain the non-conforming status.
You have an idea?
I do. So the proposed new cannabis business will have to have council approval. So anybody that wants to start a grow business would have to come to council for approval, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a little more nuanced than that. I handed out those large agricultural land maps. On one side is showing the land that is zoned, agricultural and rural resource. And then on the backside of that, there is a darker green blob that shows where the ALR land is. ALR land and agriculturally zoned land do not need to be the same thing, they just often are. For anything on agricultural land reserve land, the dark, dark green on that map, they will not be required to seek council approval. However, anything on, anything on a zone where agriculture is a permitted use would require an application to council for what we call a site-specific zoning, which would request to add a specific provision, either cannabis production indoor, cannabis production outdoor, or both to that one individual lot. So it would be seen on a case-by-case basis on non-agricultural land and be subject to the same requirements that this zoning bylaw has, being advertisements in the newspaper and a public hearing.
So those on ALR land would then conform to ALR regulations?
That is correct. Some of this bylaw does affect the ALR lands, Mr. Mayor. The thirty-meter setback, as well as the lot coverages, the thirty-five percent for agricultural buildings, seventy-five percent for greenhouses, and the other percent for industrial uses.
Can you explain the thirty-meter setback? What does that mean? Does that mean, okay, here's one property, here's another property, it's thirty meters from?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the thirty-meter setback is for any structures associated with the use to the property line abutting a residential zone, a rural residential zone, or a multifamily residential zone. So it's from the outer face of the wall of the building to the property line is thirty meters, which is approximately a hundred feet.
So if there was, if they were growing in between there outside, then that would be okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this, this setback is only proposed on structures.
Okay, one last one. So cannabis production will be prohibited within the industrial zone with this bylaw change, correct?
I, thank you, Mr. Mayor, cannabis production indoor or outdoor is not currently proposed within the industrial zones.
Any other questions for clarification, counselors? Counsel Hopple.
Through the mayor. It's when we send that we, through any bylaw, I don't know that much thing goes on with the ALR, is that correct?
That's not entirely true. We do have, Mr. Mayor, some authorities to, to regulate some uses within the agricultural land reserve. In this instance, there have been provisions put in this proposed bylaw that would, one, limit the area back to the lot coverage, the setbacks from the lots. That's all in effect on ALR land, as well as the requirement that it be grown outdoors in a building that has the foundation, or no foundation, floor consisting entirely of soil, or in a building that was originally constructed for the growing and processing of crops that was constructed and completed before July thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Did we just maximize our options, or is there room for more?
We've maximized our easily available options. There may be some more options, but that would be something that would have to happen in a fairly detailed discussion with the Agricultural Land Commission. These are the regulations that have been handed to local governments under the recent provision of the Agricultural Land Reserve Act.
So having some of those conversations, what would be the next step to bring those forward?
Well, I can say before I let Mr. Taylor answer, obviously, the OCP, the Official Community Plan, is where we're going to have lots of conversation. As, as it is appropriate that if council wishes to pass this amendment, they can also rescind that amendment in the future or readjust it, depending on good works and studies in terms of our OCP. What this does, it gives us time to really look at the whole picture and the ability in which we decide with staff input and Republican input through the OCP is where we want to see this business grow or not grow. The point is, is that the OCP will allow another avenue of detailed input. I think what this does, it just gives us that safety net, so the thing doesn't get away on us. Don't forget, I came to this council with a lot of new information from mayors up to see this guy, the MLAs from, from Delta and from Alder Grove in terms of saying, be cautious, be cautious. And I think the staff has given us a good approach to be cautious, and yet there's still the opportunity for variances. And this council noted, the variance comes, we consider it, and we make up our mind from there, as well as the backfall or backdrop will be the OCP. The OCP will end up being our documents that I feel will have a much more input from everybody in terms of where we want to see this particular decision grow in this region. Mr. Taylor?
Just a point of clarification, just on, on some verbiage there. The development variance permit is not, just because they're very different things, is not the appropriate avenue to do this. It would be a rezoning application, just to make sure that we're on the same page there.
I got schooled very well by the whole plan, thank you.
To answer the counselor's question, Mr. Mayor, the resolution from August tenth of the rescinding of the second reading of the bylaw did ask that staff bring forward, or engage with stakeholders over a period of several months, and then bring back another potential bylaw for council's review. That resolution still stands, and unless staff are directed otherwise, we will continue to devote time towards that.
Thank you.
Any more comments, questions for clarification, council? No? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Then I'm looking to someone to move that zoning bylaw amendment, bylaw number twenty twenty dash zero zero nine, be read a third time, who will so move? Counsel How, second? There being none, that has been defeated, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I can't second. I can't, I will second the motion. Okay? I'll call the question. Zoning bylaw amendment, bylaw twenty twenty dash zero zero nine, be read a third time. Who will vote in favor? opposed? It's Carrie. Okay, number two, that zoning bylaw amendment, bylaw number twenty twenty dash zero zero nine, be adopted, who will so move? Counsel How, second? I'll second. I'll call the question, those in favor? And those opposed? We have a tie.
It's defeated.
Sorry?
It's defeated.
It's defeated. So we've got a third time rating, and then where does it go from here?
There was adoption defeated? It's done. The bylaw is dead.
So it's gone, so we're sticking on, okay? Thank you, council. We'll move to item thirteen, work in progress. I need someone to move that the work in progress as of October first, twenty twenty, be received for information. Who will so move? Counsel How, second? Counsel Leach, I'll call the question, those in favor? Carrie, thank you, staff. I think the council resolution should work well for us. And now I'll do a report from the mayor. Okay, on September nineteenth, I toured the farms with Area B Director Vivian Burtstolz and Sarah Blas, and found it very informative and very challenging for the folks that operate there. September twenty-third, Zoom meeting with staff in outreach help for opioid march planning, march planning meeting, and also a meeting with Mr. Harder, Austin, modular homes. September twenty-fifth, a go-to meeting with Lilawatt Health Planning Table, and the same day, a meeting with Michael Diller, developer of Furifuri Creek. September thirtieth, Zoom meeting with Area B Agricultural Committee. And on October the fifth, I met with the new NDP candidate for district, Aaron Sutowski. That's it for me, and I need Counsel Hopple.
This is quite a meeting. I have September fourteenth, special meeting, the close meeting, and then the regular meeting. And I just wanted to say congratulations to the opening of ten parks. They actually donated a skid full of children's books and toys to the Lilawatt hospital, far more than we actually see. So we will be distributing those at a later date around town. And also, I have heard that the still-standing episode of Lilawatt will be aired October twentieth, so set your PBRs.
Okay, Counsel Hopple.
Okay, Wednesday. Sorry, I'll start with the twenty-first. Monday the twenty-first was the M I A B C A G M, which means it was the Municipal Insurance Association Annual General Meeting. Very interesting. Wednesday the twenty-third was the Tourism Lilawatt meeting, which we'll learn more about today in the upcoming for that. Tuesday the twenty-ninth, I had this so got A G M. And I wish that Counsel Reed was here, but there's a big announcement. Should I make it?
Yes, by all means.
Okay. So, big congratulations to Counsel Reed for being voted as a board director. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks. And congratulations to Counsel Reed. Counsel Leach?
All right, so I don't have details. And I have to admit that I have missed quite a few meetings in the last month, or last couple of weeks due to work and negotiations. However, my email inbox has never been fuller, and the results of communications with the general public and different committees that we sit on, so I apologize to those who involved in the boards that the meetings have missed, but I have definitely communication and there is some, a lot of strategic planning in place with different groups, so that's all.
Back to Counsel Leach. Counsel Reed, this regret. And we'll move to item seventeen point one, CAO report, Mr. Denninger.
Eight points, first one being that we have a new relief building inspector, Richard Diamond, who started with the bang last week, and is catching up very quickly on outstanding building inspections. Welcome him to our team. Old school property, just so council knows, this was a director from council many months ago, I think before the pandemic started, we were looking at acquiring the old school property near Downton Park that sponsored ground grant application has been submitted after some brainstorming and stakeholder engagement. The next step is for the province to formally engage with indigenous communities that may be affected by it. The district has already reached out to them and floated the idea, and we haven't received anything other than support. So hopefully, the provinces' conversations go well. The airport grant was awarded for the fueling station and tank, and that work will start shortly, hopefully before the snow falls. We've identified grant funding and a couple of specialist consultants to identify and analyze business and community impacts for potential improvements to the airport. This was one of council's strategic objectives for this year, and we've found sources of money and companies that do this for a living, so we're excited to pursue that. We are working with neighboring indigenous communities on a collaboration for a natural assets inventory, which goes back to Counselor How's question earlier about water sources. We're looking at working with our three nearest neighbors to actually capture natural assets such as water sources in our overall asset management planning. And the Municipal Natural Assets Initiative is really excited to work with us, and they're looking at actually incorporating indigenous histories with the natural assets. So how does, how does the land speak to their history and their culture as it is now? And how do we capture that in our asset management so that we don't do something dumb? Freeman Award nominations close this Saturday, October tenth. Put your nomination in. All that information is on our Facebook page. Just come down to Municipal Hall. While you're in Municipal Hall, please pick up an OCP survey, if you're interested. It's also available on lilawatt.ca/OCP. We do what we can to get out there to the community, but we ask that the community get involved and answer the surveys, otherwise we don't know what you're thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denninger. Any questions for our CAO? No? Okay, we'll go to new business, eighteen eighteen point one, Lilawatt Municipality opioid march letter. So Counsel How, I wish to speak to them.
Sorry, guys. Through the mayor. This is directed to, I'm doing the, who's Dr. Denninger, the person to speak to, but I've been wrong. If we support the march, are we defying any safety protocol expressed by the municipal officials?
I must apologize, staff have already given their support and have worked with them on this. We've provided maps, walking maps, and worked with Ministry of Transportation, and worked with our insurance agents and so forth. And so it is going full head, full steam ahead with all the COVID safety things in effect. So it should be a success and be safe, and council is invited to join the march. They'll be breaking it up. If they get over fifty people, it'll be broken up into segments of fifty with spacing and time and space to keep it safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or clarification? Okay, then you will move that, uh, the Correspondence Lilwet Municipality Opioid March Letter be included, uh, dated twenty, September twenty-ninth, we received confirmation. You move that? Who will second? Counselor Leach, call it. Question, those in favor? Carry. Okay, eighteen, item eighteen point two, City of New West Minister Letter Reuniversally Access to No-Cost Prescription and Antireduction. You wish to speak to that, Counselor Howe?
I do. Thank you. Through the mayor. I'd like to make a motion to council to support the new Westminster Council in their important work in battling a challenge that falls on generally the hearts of women and young women. A challenge that is effectively addressed and supported. And if it is addressed and supported, will aid in minimizing pain and unwanted pregnancies. And there will be multiple, uh, positive long-term effects that are vast and new ones through this kind of support. So, I would like, for council, I motion to council, to request that staff send a letter to support the, um, how should I say this? To support new Westminster, to send a letter of support?
Yep. I believe what they're asking is that municipalities write a letter of support for their resolution, so you'd like staff to write a letter in support?
I'd like to do that. I would like to ask, uh, direct staff to send a letter of support, please, to the municipal, um, I think they listed, to all, all, um, organizations listed.
Okay, so you move that? You will second it? Who will second? Oh, okay. Well, we, we can discuss it before we move on. Anybody want to move second? Counselor Howe? Questions, comments?
So, down to Mr. Denninger, just for clarity, with, um, this, if they get support from municipalities, will then go to UBCM resolution? Is that what they're looking for? Or is it just like a letter that's going to go to the inbox of all the people listed?
I, I think it's, 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 UBCM is supposed to vote now, isn't it?
Yeah, it, it could, it could go on to the next round of UBCM, but right now, it's written directly to the ministers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We're good? Any more? Yes, Counselor Howe?
Uh, just like you said, I, I think there's still merit to it. The more touches we see this request, the better. It, it just, it, it shows a deep interest. And it will not be a surprise to them when it comes in through UBCM.
Okay, if any, I don't want any boxing, but, uh, we have a written, Counselor, Counselor Leach?
Um, just, as, I'm, I'm not denouncing the venue, um, but going through all that I wasn't able to attend, I mean, even the healthcare planning table that we have sat on, um, I think that's a table to maybe bring something like this to when you get into the planning stages. And then, uh, with all the schools partners from the community and communities surrounding us, it would be much more effective, um, to push there. So, maybe, I would maybe like to see this just maybe put to the side and then brought about the healthcare planning committee table, whatever that is called.
I'd like to see both.
Sure, you're good.
I'd like to see both. The more touches are better.
Well, we, we've got a good table. It's, it's moved second, and so we're going to vote on it. No, no matter which way you look at it. Any more discussion? No? Okay, I'm going to call a question. And that is that the staff, uh, formulated a letter of support for the City of New West in terms of their universal access to no-cost prescription for contraception. And, uh, I'll call a question. Those in favor? Those opposed? Defeated.
Sorry.
Okay? Thank you, guys. Great. But at least what you know, it'll come onto the, uh, the table, the house table. Okay, uh, item nineteen, I need someone to move with the meeting. We open the questions from the media and public. Who will so move? Oh, nobody did, so I guess we can go with that one. Who moves? Counselor Howl, second. Counselor Howe. Call a question. Those in favor? Carry. Are there any questions from media?
Um, I have, actually, I have a good half phrase.
We good? Thank you. Any questions from the public?
This is a question concerning the, uh, Official Community Plan. Is there a, uh, a schedule of meetings that's available somewhere that we can take a look at to kind of see, uh, when various stages in the process are, are, are going through or going to be gone through? And opportunities where, uh, the public would have an opportunity to spend time with, you know, whoever's drafting, uh, that plan, uh, to, to kind of prepare for it. It, it may already exist, I'm just not aware of it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. I believe there is, Mr. Taylor, you can, or planner can, uh, address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the moment, we are still in, uh, phase two of the Official Community Plan process, which is a, a much more, um, high-level, um, engagement opportunity, less the, uh, the roundtable meetings. Uh, we are hoping for those to, um, start around February or March next year. Obviously, we, we've had to change tack a few times, uh, because of the, uh, current state of the end of the world. Um, so, no, there is no, um, schedule, uh, at this time, but it will be published as soon as we do schedule those, uh, specific meetings. Uh, however, staff will be, um, staff and our, uh, team, uh, at Modus Consulting, uh, will be accepting, uh, feedback and engagement at any time. Uh, and, uh, members of the public with their groups are more than welcome to organize their own, um, uh, COVID-safe, um, engagement opportunities, and, uh, if invited and, uh, available, staff will attend those, uh, those self-directed meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it is the intention of staff and council to make this a very detailed audit, who will so move? It's going to be important for our next decade, let's put it that way. So, we'll make sure everyone is, in fact, we will solicit input from everybody or any people as possible. Any more questions from the public? There hearing none. I need someone to move that the October fifth, twenty twenty, regular council meeting be adjourned. Who will so move? Counselor Howe, second. Counselor Leach. Call a question. Those in favor? Carry. Thank you, council, and thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you for the participation in the public hearing. And thank you, staff, for arranging these microphones.